Welcome to the Monday, November 20th, 2023 session of the Lake Forest City Council. Will the city clerk please call the roll?
Certainly, Honorable Mayor Tac.
Here.
Alderman Novit.
Here.
Alderman Waldeck.
Present.
Alderman Notes.
Here.
Alderman Powers.
Here.
Alderman Preschlack.
Here.
Alderman Gashkarian.
Here.
Alderman Weber.
Here.
Alderman Walder.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. First item is comments by mayor, and I have a few. On the back of the city's fall dialogue newsletter is a "How Well Do You Know Lake Forest Towers?" contest, where we ask residents to identify the location of these towers. The pictures are on the slide here. And just for fun, we will ask the city council, and don't all speak at once, what the identity of the towers is. Does anybody know all three of them, where they're located?
I believe I do.
All right. Alderman Walder.
From left to right, City Hall, Settler Square over on the west side of town, and Market Square.
Way to go.
Excellent, you are the winner. You get to stay.
Great, the meeting's now adjourned.
All right, from all the correct entries, and there were more than one, by the way, we drew one lucky winner. And that winner is Diane Gold, who I'm sure is not present. Congratulations, Diane, you've won some Lake Forest swag and bragging rights. Please pick up your prize at City Hall at your convenience. Rumor has it, there's going to be a "Name the Snowplow" contest in the winter dialogue newsletter, so keep your eyes out for that. Next item, there are many things happening in Lake Forest in the next few weeks, so I'd just like to go over a few of them. First is the 39th Annual Lake Forest Tree Lighting Holiday Celebration. I encourage all of you to attend. A very special person will be lighting the tree this year. This will be on November 24th, from 3:00 to 6:00 p.m. in historic Market Square. Please enjoy an afternoon of live music, kids' activities, food and beverages, carolers, LFDA dancers, and of course, Santa Claus. Hope to see all of you there. Next item is the city is partnering with the Lake Forest Lake Bluff Chamber of Commerce to present the Think Local pop-up shop again this year. Please stop by to find gifts that give back. Simply purchase the merchandise from one of the nonprofits represented, and sale proceeds will go directly to that organization. This year, the shop is located right off Market Square at 653 Bank Lane. The pop-up shop will be open for the tree lighting this week, and then will be open Thursdays, Fridays, and Saturdays, 11:00 to 4:00, throughout the holiday season. After nearly eight months of construction, the Deer Path Community Park Improvement Project is nearing completion. Please join us for a first look in ribbon cutting at the new and improved Deer Path Community Park on Thursday, November 30th, at 4:15 p.m. Take a first look at the new athletic fields, playground, walking path, pavilions, and more. Scan the QR code to RSVP or RSVP at thecityoflakeforest.com/dearpathparkRSVP. Additionally, if someone brings up the recent joint statement, we have language, and this is, I'm reading too much. Never mind. Sorry about that one. Next.
Mayor Tac, I have a question. Do you happen to know where this pop-up? I know you have the address 653 Bank Lane, but can we get some color as to what that's next to?
Yeah, I'll let Dana Olson answer that.
Sure, so it's in the old thrift store shop, kind of between Sweets and Left Bank, right over on Bank Lane.
I think that's helpful information, so people can find it.
Yes, yeah, good to give people landmarks.
Excellent.
There's a wonderful window display, so if you, I invite you to walk by after the meeting tonight and check it out. We're excited for it to open on Friday.
Great.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is comments by city manager.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of city council. Good evening, I'm pleased to say I have no report tonight.
Excellent, excellent. The next item is opportunity for citizens to address the council. Would anybody like to address the council at this time? Seeing none, we will move on to committee reports. The next report is from the Finance Committee, which will be introduced by Elizabeth Hollab, Finance Director. This will be for consideration of an ordinance establishing the 2023 tax levy first reading.
Good evening, thank you, Mayor, and city council members. This is the fourth time you have considered and reviewed the 2023 tax levy ordinance. What is new this evening is included in your packet is the actual tax levy ordinance. So that is provided. The numbers have not changed. You did review the tax levy in detail last week at your Finance Committee meeting, so I'll just provide a summary. The detailed schedules were included in your packet, and then answer any questions. This slide just shows a general breakdown of the city's property tax levy. It does provide funds to numerous funds and departments of the city. The primary item is the general fund. Operating levy, which you can see, is proposed to increase by 3% plus new construction, bringing that up to about 3.9% over last year. We then levy dollars for pension funds, the three pension plans that city employees participate in. And then you have some other funds included in the tax levy ordinance, specifically the Parks and Recreation Fund, the Special Recreation Fund, the Capital Fund, and the Library. So the Library is a component unit of the city, and so the levy for the Library, operating levy, is included in the city's tax levy ordinance. And then you have a subtotal called aggregate levy. That is important, and I'll follow up on that in just a few minutes. Below the aggregate levy subtotal are the bond funds. These are the different bond issues outstanding. The debt service levies that are after abatement, which you'll consider after the tax levy ordinance, shows the net debt service amount to be included on the property tax levy. The two subtotals, the aggregate levy and the bond levy, are important because under the Truth and Taxation Statute, if either of those totals exceed the prior year by 5%, there are specific requirements that the taxing district needs to meet. That's a public notice and conducting of a public hearing prior to final approval of the tax levy ordinance. So that public notice will be published in the Lake Forester in the November 23rd edition. And then your public hearing will be held on December 4th, when you consider final approval of the tax levy ordinance. So you can see that in total, the grand total tax levy is proposed to increase by 4.35% over the prior year extended levy. The next slide just summarizes the projected impact on the average household. The first number that you see is the city equalized assessed valuation. The 2023 forecast provides the current estimate by the Lake County Assessor's Office of the total property values in the city for the 2023 tax levy purposes. You can see that the county is projecting a 5.6% increase in the overall assessed valuation of all property in the city. And so that is factored into the tax rate. Below the EAV, you see the total city levy, that which was extended last year, and that which is proposed this year. And then that divided by the equalized assessed valuation generates the projected rate. We use an average household of 800,000, so an average home of 800,000, which would increase by 5.6% on average this year, is used to calculate the total tax amount on an average household as a result of the levy proposed. So you can see that that, on an average household, is projected to increase by $162 over last year. And then I would just note that it's important to remember that the city and levy combined reflect about 26% of the total tax bill. So that $162 applies to that 26%. The other taxing districts are doing a similar process of approving their tax levies, and so their increases will be adjusted proportionally. The last slide just provides a summary of the primary purposes of the property tax levy revenue and just shows the distribution of the proposed 23 levy by purpose, noting that again, a majority of that does go to the general fund for operating purposes, and then for other purposes, as you see in the pie chart. So before you this evening is a request to grant first reading to the 2023 tax levy ordinance. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
I do have one question. So the tax levy is, for the average household, is $162. What is the effect of that levy in terms of the tax rate for that portion of the bill that can be allocated to the city?
So the tax rate will actually decrease. We've projected a slight decrease in the tax rate, and that is because the EAV is projected to increase by more than the tax levy. So because the EAV is increasing by 5.6, the levy's increasing by 4.35, that will generate a slight decrease in the tax rate.
Thank you. Are there any other questions for Director Hollab?
Do we feel that the average home is still 800,000 is a true representation of average?
So we do use the census data, and last year's census data showed about 815,000. So we do check that to make sure that we're staying. Now, it's important, the Census Bureau looks at it from a median standpoint, meaning 50% of the properties are below, 50% of the properties are higher, but we do look at that. It's important to note that our average sale on real estate is more than $1 million. And so that's only looking at residential sales that have occurred in the city, but it does suggest that that may creep up in the next year to three years.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Okay, there being none, may I have a motion to grant first reading of an ordinance establishing the 2023 tax levy?
So moved.
Okay, city clerk, and roll call vote, please.
Sorry about that. Can I have a motion? I didn't hear who made the motion in the second.
Jim.
Jim.
Yeah, I made the first motion, and then Alderman Notes made the second.
Thank you. Alderman Notes.
Aye.
Alderman Powers.
Aye.
Alderman Preschlack.
Aye.
Alderman Gashkarian.
Aye.
Alderman Weber.
Aye.
Alderman Walder.
Aye.
Alderman Novit.
Aye.
Alderman Waldeck.
Aye.
Eight yeas, zero nae, motion carries.
Okay, thank you. The next item is going to be presented by Elizabeth Hollab, Finance Director. This will be for approval of ordinances abating the 2023 tax levies for various geo-alternate revenue bond issues, first reading.
Thank you, Mayor Tac. This item relates to the bond fund subtotal you saw in the previous item related to the debt service levy. So the city issues all of its debt as general obligation debt. So it's backed by the full faith and credit, the ability for the city to levy property taxes to pay for that debt service. And so what is needed each year is abatement ordinances, which essentially reduce the debt service levy by any amounts for which debt service is intended to be paid from other non-property tax sources. So this table is included and summarizes the five outstanding bond issues that the city currently has. The first column shows what the total debt service next year for that would be, and the amount that the county would levy absent any abatements or reductions. So then in the following columns, by source of revenue, you can see the different abatements. So the 2015 issue included bond proceeds associated with the city's Laurel and Western Tiff District for the demolition of the old Municipal Services Building and environmental remediation on the site to prepare it for development. And so Tiff increment revenue is used to pay that portion of the debt service on that issue. So that's the first abatement. The second relates to the 2017 issue, which was for the water plant improvements. So that entire debt service for the 2017 issue is paid from water operating revenues, so we fully abate that amount and bring that to zero for the tax levy. And then the last item is the 2023 issue, which was funding for Deer Path Park improvements. And so this year, as discussed last week at the Finance Committee meeting, we're recommending a $329,000 abatement to that total debt service, which accomplishes a three-year phase-in of that debt service. You started with an amount last year in your 2022 levy, and then this year with the full debt service of 1.27 being partially abated, and then we will bring the full amount on next year for the levy. That is funded from proceeds related to the Tiff loan, the note repayment. That repayment was deferred sale proceeds when the property was sold to the developer. And as that Tiff note repayment comes into the city, those revenues are unrestricted, so they're available for use for any purposes. We've typically put that into the Capital Improvement Fund. This year, a portion of it is proposed to levy and abate this debt service amount. So you have three ordinances included in your packet for first reading approval, abating the debt service on those three specific bond issues. Happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions for Director Hollab? Okay, if there's no questions from the council, is there anyone in the public that would like to make a comment on this issue? Hearing none, may I have a motion to grant first reading of the ordinances abating tax levies for various general obligation bond issues?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Excuse me, Alderman Powers.
Aye.
Alderman Preschlack.
Aye.
Alderman Gashkarian.
Aye.
Alderman Weber.
Aye.
Alderman Walder.
Aye.
Alderman Novit.
Aye.
Alderman Waldeck.
Aye.
Alderman Notes.
Aye.
Eight yeas, zero nae, motion carries.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is consideration of an ordinance approving a fee schedule, first reading. This will be presented by Diane Hall, Assistant Finance Director.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Tonight included in your packet is a list of the city's fees. Changes are highlighted in green and yellow. Green are for changes that are based on current processes. Yellows are changes that are for proposed fee increases or changes. Associated with those increases are the estimated revenues per line item. The slide shows a summarization of those changes by the different departments, the funds that are associated with those fees, and projected total revenue. Water rates will be brought back in January at the Finance Committee for consideration. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions for Director Hall? Hearing none, is there anyone in the public that would like to comment on this matter? Hearing none, I would like to ask for a motion to grant first reading of an ordinance approving a fee schedule.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Preschlack.
Aye.
Alderman Gashkarian.
Aye.
Alderman Weber.
Aye.
Alderman Walder.
Aye.
Alderman Novit.
Aye.
Alderman Waldeck.
Aye.
Alderman Notes.
Aye.
Alderman Powers.
Aye.
Eight yeas, oh, I'm sorry, and Alderman Preschlack, I called you first. Eight yeas, zero nae, motion carries.
Okay, thank you. The next item on the agenda is items for omnibus vote consideration. I'll reach each item, and if anyone on the council would like one taken separately or removed, please let me know at the completion of the reading. Number one, approval of November 6, 2023, city council meeting minutes. Number two, consideration of a request to waive the fidelity bond requirement in connection withholding a raffle in the city of Lake Forest for the Lake Forest Lake Bluff Chamber of Commerce. Number three, approval of a one-year contract with American Printing Technologies for processing vehicle licenses and parking permits in an amount not to exceed $44,000. Number four, award of the contract for GIS services to MGP Incorporated in the not-to-exceed amount of $130,626 for calendar year 2024. And number five, authorization for the mayor or city manager to execute a grant agreement between the city of Lake Forest and the state of Illinois Department of Natural Resources for the Forest Park Boardwalk Project, subject to final review and approval of the city attorney. Are there any items that the council would like to be removed or taken separately? Hearing none, may I have a motion to approve the five omnibus items as presented?
So moved.
Second.
May we have a roll call vote, please?
Alderman Gashkarian.
Aye.
Alderman Weber.
Aye.
Alderman Walder.
Aye.
Alderman Novit.
Aye.
Alderman Waldeck.
Aye.
Alderman Notes.
Aye.
Alderman Powers.
Aye.
Alderman Preschlack.
Aye.
Eight yeas, zero nae, motion carries.
Excellent, the next item is old business, of which there is none this evening. Under new business, we have an item that will be presented by Amber Campbell, Director of Human Resources, consideration of an ordinance regarding the Illinois Paid Leave for All Workers Act, first reading, and if desired by the city council, final approval.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of city council. Thank you. I am here to bring forth a recommendation regarding the new Paid Leave for All Workers Act that goes into effect on January 1. The act requires that all employers provide 40 hours of paid time off to employees, both full-time and part-time. The way the act works is employees can accrue up to one hour of paid time off for every 40 hours worked. One of the key components of the act, and the one that causes us some pause, is paid leave may be taken for any reason without documentation requirements. We must allow the leave to be used for any reason. There is no ability to deny for operational reasons. So the Department of Labor is still finalizing the information on this act, even though it goes into effect January 1. They anticipate final guidance to be available on March 31st. This act would significantly modify the scope of benefits currently provided. I simplify the paid leave taken for any reason as I refer to it as on-demand time. Employees can take time off without any documentation or reasons, and employers must provide it. There are some groups that have been exempt from the act. Public works unions is one of those exemptions. Park districts were exempt, however, it does not apply to Parks and Recreation Departments. School districts are another group that is exempt from the act. The impact on this is significant. Imagine running a 4th of July event, that could be seriously affected, the safety of our other programs, lifeguards, camp counselors. Police and fire are not automatically exempt from the act. The impacts will negatively affect our operations. It will affect core emergency services, all types of events and programming. The city is currently engaged in a workload analysis. Part of the reason for this workload analysis, there were many goals, was to bring data back to make recommendations about PTO through our normal budget process. The act came prior to, you know, us implementing our own policies. My recommendation to opt out of the act using our home rule authority is to preserve our right to design our own policies. We will be revisiting our paid leave policies, including for part-time employees, during this fiscal year. We're looking to strike a balance. We certainly want to ensure competitiveness when it comes to recruitment and retention, but we also need to ensure continuity of services to our residents. So the recommendation will come to city council through our normal budget process. So what I'm looking for today is to exercise our home rule authority to maintain current employee benefits and look to design our own policies into the future. If determined to be appropriate by the city council, we're looking to waive first reading and grant final approval. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Before I ask the council, is it correct, am I correct, in hearing you that this actually is going into effect before the actual final language of the law is written?
The law is currently in place. The guidelines by the Department of Labor, so interpreting the rules and how that implies to employers, is still currently in flux. So there have been many contradictory statements in the current guidelines that are in place, and that, but essentially, yes, that is correct. The law itself, as written, is currently in place, but the practical applications for employers and the guidelines by the Department of Labor are not expected to be finalized by March 31st, so we are looking to act now.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. Are there other questions or comments?
So Amber, this gives us the ability to eliminate any ambiguity, gosh, ambiguity, excuse me, associated with some of those gray areas that aren't properly defined.
Absolutely.
Great, thank you.
Other questions or comments?
Hi, Amber, thanks for the presentation. How happy are employees in general with our current leave benefits? Is it pretty competitive, and everyone seems, you know, it's satisfactory? Or do you anticipate some, in that kind of order of magnitude, changes from the study?
We did an employee survey earlier in the year, earlier in this calendar year, as a precursor to our workload analysis and bringing back our benefits committee to assess that. In order to maintain competitiveness in the market, we are going to need to look at current paid time off levels. However, I will say that overall, you know, employees are fairly happy with how our benefits work, but we do need to address some minor areas that employees have brought forward.
I guess the only other comment I'd make is that I know for, as we entered into home rule, this is the exact kind of situation and the reason why we wanted to do it. I mean, it's, you know, to have discretion on how we want to manage our community and our town and our employees and not have things dictated to us that don't fit or are just not. Or we could get above and beyond the base requirements, but so I'm very much in support of this, and I thank you for the work to analyze the kind of workload and also the survey, and it's great.
And I'll just note to Alderman Preschlack's question, one of the reasons we're looking at our benefits is trying to be proactive and get ahead of some of the changing dynamics and demographics in the workforce. And we know, at least sort of anecdotally, that younger generations seem to value time off more than perhaps previous generations, and certainly in comparison to looking at compensation as the overriding determining factor. And so wanting to be ahead of the curve in ensuring, again, our competitiveness and recruitment, but also making sure that, you know, that we're able to sustain our operations, knowing that we operate pretty lean from a staffing perspective, that's the balance we're trying to strike. Thank you, Mayor. Amber, I'm just curious if we had any input from our public safety unions? Police and fire, have they chimed in on this, and do they have any thoughts?
We have not spoken about this with our current police and fire unions. How the act is written, any current contract in place overrides the act until negotiations would open up again with any current union.
Okay, thank you. Alderman?
Is the, I'm getting this, so the primary concern about this is that it's unscheduled. They can just call up and say, "I'm not coming."
Correct, you can't ask.
What's the policy now about time off?
Well, we are extremely flexible when it comes to the needs of families, parents, you know, the need for time off. However, we do have minimum coverage requirements for departments, for events, et cetera. So we do ask for notice, and, but we do try and work with our employees on allowing them the time off that they need. The concern with this is that employees from an entire department could say, "I would like to not work Christmas," and you would have to allow it. And as I'm sure you can infer into some of our areas, that would be extremely problematic.
And does this address in any way, shape, or form the number of people that could do it? For instance, could you have an entire department just announce the day beforehand that they were going to take a certain day off, and you would have nobody show up and no ability to offset that?
The act would permit that, yes. Opting out of the act will then allow us to maintain our current policies and procedures and review those and build those with what works for our current operations.
Thank you.
Can I ask one question? Is there any negative impact to us opting out, like from any funding from the state or anything?
I do not believe so, no. There are a number of municipalities, we've worked very closely with our labor attorneys on this, and there are a number of home rule communities, almost all home rule communities that I'm familiar with, that I talk with closely, are using their home rule authority to opt out of the act and build their own policies.
Okay, other questions, comments? Okay, at this time, I'd like to ask for any public commentary. Seeing none, I would like to ask for...
I think there may be one. So would you like to say something? You can come up to the mic.
Come up to the mic and please state your name and address, please.
Thank you, Diane Edelman, at 673 Cherry. So a couple of quick questions about the benefits. Let's say home rule is kicked to the curb, or someone decides to sue us, are we liable for any kind of repercussions? And does this 40-hour limit restrict us from being more generous? I don't know the current policies, but...
City Attorney?
If we were subject to the act, there are penalties if you don't comply. However, since we're home rule, we're going to be...
However, since we're Home Rule, we're going to be exempting ourselves. The only challenge really there is whether or not we're properly exercising our Home Rule authority. In this case, the state had the opportunity to include language that would preempt Home Rule authority and mandate even Home Rule units to comply with this act. They did not include that language in the act. So I think it's pretty clear that the state left open that window for Home Rule units to opt out.
So bottom line, our risks are low regarding Home Rule. Okay, perfect, thanks.
And I'll follow to the second point, to just say that there's nothing in the action being requested tonight that would prevent the city from providing more generous benefits in the future than what the act is entitling employees.
Okay. Is there other public comments? Sorry, I missed you the first time. Seeing none. Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, I would like to ask for a motion to waive first reading and grant final approval of the ordinance regarding the Illinois Paid Leave for All Workers Act.
So moved.
May I have a roll call vote, please?
Alderman Weber.
Aye.
Alderman Walder.
Aye.
Alderman Novit.
Aye.
Alderman Waldak.
Aye.
Alderman Notes.
Aye.
Alderman Powers.
Aye.
Alderman Preschlack.
Aye.
Alderman Gashgarian.
Aye.
Dramatic.
Zero nay, motion carries.
Okay, at this time, are there any additional items for discussion or commentary by city council members? Okay, hearing none. May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Meeting is adjourned. Yeah, except I got too fast in my reading.